Twenty eighth May first, twenty twenty three to order. This invitation please.
Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight, guide the council to make the right decisions and and the right decision about the rec director and all things that they do. Be with us, keep us safe. Thank you for allowing Ms. Mary to be back tonight. And thank you for allowing our Mayor Gary Owens to be better and he'll be back soon. We thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I plead with allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Scott Green pulled his application, so we have Ms. Jerika, Nikki Gauthier. You go by Ms. Nikki, right? And everybody should have her application. You guys want to start?
Yeah, you and me, uh, tell them what, well, I'll tell them what I recommend. This is the problem, uh, and I'm glad your husband's here.
It's kind of like a joint thing.
This is the problem we have in our rec director. Uh, you know, Timothy's been there a while and you on the rec board, right?
The paperwork. You're all on the rec board?
Yes, or yes and.
The main issue is the paperwork. And I know it's hard to get, first of all, it's hard to get coaches to commit to coach a ball team. But with that said, the background checks has to be done. That's the main thing, and and I'll tell you why. We had a coach, uh, coached a few years ago that shouldn't have been on the ball field period. And I'll leave it at that. And that's what the city runs in. You know, we look after the city best as we can for lawsuits. And, uh, the paperwork, so that's going, it's going to delay you a little bit. See, Britten coaches. Timothy never said nothing to him about a background check. He learned in a meeting up there. And so with that said, I know he don't try to do none of the paperwork, okay? Then the second issue we have, the council don't even know how many kids we got playing ball. We don't know how many teams there are. We don't know how many kids signed up. We don't know how many kids the city paid for. You know, we don't know nothing. We don't get nothing paperwork back. And the next thing is concession stand. Whoever works that concession stand, uh, me and Ms. Quinn worked it one night a couple of years ago. And two people, it's in the, uh, in the, uh,
The concession stand or the?
Thing, uh, paper. All you got to do at the end of the night, when that ca- uh, cash register finishes, you sign, whoever's working the concession stand, two people, counts that money, signs off. And I don't care if it's not the next day. It says the next working day the city can turn it in. As long as you get it into the city. But we don't have no regulation. What goes on out there? We don't know who's on the rec board. Till about two weeks ago, or when this issue started, when Timothy come, uh, he got a, he told us who was on it. And I think of course it's been added since then. But the thing is, you know, we blindside the council. You know, we, we trying to help y'all. We'll do anything we can do to help the ball field doing and our kids out there, just like buying the equipment. It ain't hard to take a piece of paper and if I give Matt a helmet, two helmets, uh, catcher's mitt, whatever, get it back at the end of the year. If you can't get it back from Matt, the council can, you know, but, you know, Timothy spent we're low three thousand dollars in one check. First of all, we approved by the council, they didn't spend that. But the city had to pay for it because he went ahead and got the equipment, all the way down to shoes, you know? And we've never bought shoes and, uh, you know, but, you know, things like that. You've got a certain amount that you can spend, you know, in the city every year. I know you have to buy equipment, but like Matt knows, Britten knows. If you coach one of them ball teams, especially them little kids, uh, you buy a brand new two hundred dollar catcher's mitt. You play ten, ten games, that catcher's mitt not even going to get broken. That catcher's mitt ought to last five to ten years if it's taken care of. You know, and that's the problem I have out there with our recreation department. And, uh, you know, always, you know, uh, this and that, but I know I've been out there before. Uh, it is hard to get coaches to, to, uh, coach. And just say if you got fifteen teams out there, you're looking at forty-five background checks. Because usually most teams has three coaches, you know, first base coach, second, uh, third base coach, and a head coach. So I know you can't get them overnight, but you have to work ahead on the programs the city's got. And, and I'm glad, hats off to Jason. He took the load off y'all about the mowing. He took all the mowing. Uh, he mowed, uh, the ball fields one, a day and a half, wouldn't it, Jason? It took him a long, one long.
Yes, it takes a lot, two days. We didn't mow the actual fields at the rec. I think Matt, you know, somebody mowed them already, but yeah, so we did two days at the most.
But I told, you know, the council before, when we started this issue about, I don't need rec director, uh, was going to say whoever put in down for it and say, listen, this is what, you know, we expect as far as paperwork. You know, uh, it's got to be done. It's never been done. Uh, and as a council member, you know, I don't think it's hard. The hardest thing is the coaches, you know, getting them to go take off, because I had to do it, take off a long time ago, going to get a background check.
We understand.
You know, uh, but it's got to be done, you know, when they come back and say, hey, you know, I ain't going to do it, but he ain't going to coach, simple as that. And that's requirements from the city, you know, and, and that's what required and that's what needs to be done. But other than that, uh, I'm glad really the other application took out because I was going to make a request. You already out there, you know the kids, y'all going to be out there. Our other application, uh, he ain't coached in a while that I know of, you know.
And you're around all the kids at school as well, so I mean, she knows, she knows most of the kids.
I think you'll do a good job, Nikki. Uh, I know you got a husband that will back you, uh, y'all out there at the ball field, and I appreciate, you know, uh, anything y'all need, when the city just let us know, uh, and, uh, we'll help you any way we can help you. But that's the main issue. Uh, they might have a few more things to add to it, but the paperwork.
Um, I, I reviewed both applications. I didn't realize it wanted pulled out and, um, I know that you work at the school year round kids. Um, I don't need to discuss what was on the other applicants, because he pulled it out. Um, this is an interview. You're the only one that's, that's in it, but, um, I just, and I don't want to scare y'all, but you're out there, so I'm assuming that you kind of understand our situation right now. We've got a rec director that's gone on the third. He set up a board. And as long as I've been dealing with him and the board got set up, there's been a lot of back and forth on who was supposed to do this, that, and the other, that we didn't know about. Everything was getting, fingers were getting pointed, so I would like just to let you know that, um, in case you want to run, um, you being out there, we've got a situation where there's, unless it's been turned in, there's some stuff that's out there that's going to have to be brought to City Hall and stored at City Hall. There's some Easter items and stuff like that, but like Candace has reached out.
I don't have it yet.
About that, um.
And some, uh, equipment.
There's issues with, um, PayPal, Venmo. There's three different.
Capsule.
Capsule, three different ones, um. I don't know how, well, I think I know how the rest of the council feels because we've spoken about it. I'm not comfortable with any of that because those are hooked to the city accounts. And it's all in the nightmare. We, we just found out about it not long ago. Um, as far as the board goes, uh, it's my understanding that, and like I said, I couldn't tell you y'all was on the board. I didn't know that y'all were. We just got a list last week, the week before.
A text and I told y'all.
A text, yeah. And, um, I don't know, I know that your husband's going to be helping, but if you're hired, you're, you're the one to go to. And the board, like I've said to Timothy and like I think everyone else at one point has said to Timothy, the board, it, it's not on him. It's not, it's the rec director. So whether you have a board, whether you don't, if you just have volunteers or whatever, that's going to be up to you. So that's something else that you're coming into. Making those kind of decisions if you're hired on, on how you want to go forward. If you want to use volunteers or continue with the board or whatever. All of it's on you. Um, generally, the rec director handles the fourth of July. And it's going to be hard because of the timing that you're coming into this stuff.
Right.
So it's going to be a lot. I'm assuming you're out there, you, you know, I've, I've heard good things about you. I'm sure you won't have any problems with volunteering. You know, our city workers help, you know, we all do what we can. I just, I'm not sure, other than the fourth of July, the rec doesn't really handle
Well, they've been doing Easter and Christmas.
The Easter.
And Christmas.
I thought the mayor at the council does Christmas.
The rec that's done it, rec's been doing it the last two years.
Bizarre.
So I mean, that's y'all. I'm just saying the things that they have in the last two years.
Yeah.
Ms. Quinn did want me to, when you get done, before I forget, Ms. Quinn wanted me to take some stuff, said she couldn't be here.
And I'm trying to be quick about it and think about the things because it, there's a lot, but then there's not. You know, and you're dealing with kids all the time, so I, I know that you have to have some sort of organization skills, or you would not be able to do that. Um, I think that, did you get a, a description of, of job duties?
I did the list of everything.
And the contract, we didn't have, get that from the attorney yet, and she's not able to be here, but we can have that drawn up. Do you have any questions for us?
Um, I, I'm not going to lie, I do have questions. But I honestly think it's just going to be, is I'm going to have to learn them as I go type thing. Because like you said, the board of, and I have y'all thing, I need to, I'm just saying, um, there's a lot of transparency that is one of the reasons why we were kind of interested because there's questions that we don't know as far as like, we ask about financials, we ask about certain things, and it's like, I don't know that so and so, I don't know that so and so.
That, that's what I was telling you.
Saying like.
We just found out at the last meeting, I believe it was, that there was actually a treasurer
Rec.
That's handling.
But yeah.
The rec director is supposed to be handling all that and turning all the money in to City Hall, to the clerk, or the assistant clerk, period. That, that. Personally, and I, like I said, I, I, I have a list of who's on the board. As for me, having experienced years ago in rec, rec directors and boards don't generally jive. But that's up to the rec director. But at the end of the day, whether there is a board or not, they don't have power to say or do anything. It all falls to the rec director and, and the rec director answers to the board, to this board. So like I said, you, if you take this job, you're, it's, it's going to probably be a little squirrely for a little bit.
Yes, one too.
I mean, that's, I mean.
The only thing I was working on because I don't want it to be squirrely.
It's, well, I've said.
Me as a parent to my kids, like, I, I want to do the best that I can do for them. And I want, not only is there me and him that don't know answers, there's a whole pile of people that don't know answers and you can't get them. And I want somebody that can get them those answers that will ask y'all.
We, we have a coach that didn't know that he was supposed to have a background check.
That's what I'm saying, like.
So, I mean, there, there's.
I think most of the parents too that's out there coaching wouldn't mind. It just has to be approached the right way.
Right, right. And it's something that should have been talked to y'all whenever he had a coaches meeting. I'm just saying.
Everything should have been done before.
Right, whenever we did like.
And y'all probably didn't.
Back in two thousand and twenty or something, way before COVID, when we were, Brantley was, you had to have a cover.
Yeah, we did.
Like, I mean, you had to have a background check. I had to have a background check as I was a dugout mom because I was on the field.
Yeah.
So, and I'm not going to lie, I haven't heard anybody say that they had to have a background check.
Let's see, that, that's the problem running to. You know, it's, he's drifted away and we, we've had problems with him before and all that's got him a little bit back on track. And I'm not, he's just ain't did what he's supposed to do. You know, he's got out of the meetings with what he wants to hear, us to hear from him and go on. You know, the night we got on to him, we didn't get on to him. I just told him like it was, I said, listen Timothy, the paperwork. I said, you know, none. I said, when someone comes to me and I don't even know how many kids we got signed up, I don't even know how many ball teams we got down there. It's partly my fault. I ain't been down there. I don't go down there. Some years I do, some years I don't. But still, we should have it on record.
All of that's supposed to be.
All of that should be on record for our auditor. And then what topped it off when Ms. Becky brought it up about the PayPal and all that. I don't know nothing about that, but you don't take a personal account, your personal account or my personal account. The auditor's going to get it at the end of the year. Now, we got one now. When you write sixteen, seventeen hundred dollars out of a personal account, that's the first time. Who's getting all of it? The city or your personal account? And I told Timothy that. I said, I wouldn't want nobody digging in my personal information, I ain't an auditor from the city environment. But, you know, uh, he's did things, like I said, he's pushed the city to a certain limit. And, uh, it was time for him to go and like I said, uh, any way we can help y'all, you in charge. As of the night after tonight, you'll be in charge. I'm with Becky. Rec board, no rec board, if you want to get rid of them, just take volunteers. I know, just like Big from previous experience, you know, there's people out there that don't like many people out there that might not like y'all, but you know, you the boss, bottom line. You're the one that has the answers to the city, wouldn't be ones that's going to answer you, you know, simple as that. Nobody else.
You, you're, like I say, you've been out there, so you're going to catch on. And like I say, Candace is a very good clerk. She, you know, I think the only thing financially that that we've even agreed on, and I wasn't even sure about that, is the sports engine. I, I have questions about it, but that goes directly to the city, so she has, she could say who signs up and stuff like that. But other than that, all the rest of it, um, I do know that, uh, the website, I'm not sure if the previous rec director has it the third, if that was the one that he built or whatever. I know there's some issues about that. You may have to build another page. Um, I, I'm really not sure. But as of the third, he needs to have everything turned in and keys and all the stuff that he's got except for his personal thing. Um, I agree with Joey. I think we all agree. And like he said, he agreed with me on, as far as the board is concerned, I'm not sure, but it's my understanding. Hello, Mr. Hawkins.
Hey, ma'am.
It's my understanding that you have one person doing basketball, one person doing football, one person doing baseball. And I, none, none of us have gotten any calls or anything saying that they're out. So I'm assuming that they're, you know, because of the rec director resigning, I think everybody's going to stay. And so I haven't heard any different.
I noticed Cecil, he turned in his resignation and he is the rec board president. And he was taking over baseball. But there again, y'all have questions that weren't answered either, so like, I don't know how all that's going to go. I have talked with people, some people have asked me if we were interested in the position. And I told them that that's something we are not going to have to talk about, like, I don't put my business out there, sorry. Just, that's not me. Um, but there are some, like, I know, um, Mr. Martin, he's over the football. And he said that he's looking to see how things go before he makes his final decision. Um, Mr. Galloway, he's over basketball. Um, he hasn't made any mentions of leaving or anything like that. I think they're all just waiting to see what happens and go from there. Um, that's all I have now. And I will talk to them just as soon as I know something to tell them. I mean, I will call.
Well, like I say, you've got, as of right now, there's a treasurer out there. And a cheer sponsor, same person. Um, I, I do know that that was a, a parent meeting or something was canceled. It's my understanding that was because of tonight. My understanding.
That's what I was.
Could be wrong.
That there's a new development coming in, they'll reschedule the lead.
So, uh, again, um, it's a big dog for anybody. But I think if you get the right volunteers and, and line things up, you know.
And we have them.
It'll go a lot easier.
That's what I was going to ask. Do you, you have a pretty good, uh, rapport with everybody that you work with? That you think that you can cover any of those positions if somebody steps down? A lot of people want to work with you and help and encourage the kids, that kind of stuff?
I, I work in the, uh, P at the elementary school. And I don't, I don't know. I don't look at people like they really like me or not, but I think so, like.
Well, I mean, as far as like.
Of course, wanting to work with, yeah, parent volunteers, I'm sorry.
Trey, what would you say?
I said, if they came to work, they came to work with anybody. You don't want to nail them down. They're, they're, they're making problems, that's the only reason.
Well, I think that we've all pretty much given you the horror story, the, the, the slow version.
I think there's just got to be structure around all of them.
Yeah, yeah, maybe the quick version.
And like I said, there is, like, y'all have questions? I have questions too, and I, I am going to find out. Like, I, I want to know these questions, just like you're going to have plenty of questions for me. I'm going to find that answer, and if I can't, then I'll get somebody who can help me find it.
Okay.
Supposed to be y'all or.
You said you had something for us, is that before or after we?
It's just something that I put together. A little bit about me and like, my thanks, like, for.
Powerpoint, huh?
We, we had started, I'll just say, we had started, maybe we had started this on the board, as a board. Um, one of the issues, as me being a board member, was there's, there's no, uh, there's no plan or vision that I saw. What, what is, what is the goal we look for? What are the problems we have? So we had talked, said, the only way to figure that out, right, is if we sit down and figure out what are the strengths that the board have, or what are the strengths that the rec has, what are the weaknesses we have? And, and then how do we fix those problems?
And that's.
And that's essentially what that is, the start of that, uh, with one year goals. Uh, that as, as board members, we wanted to achieve, uh, as, as towards the end. So she added some stuff in there about, about, about her, uh, but.
All or don't know who all was.
Can I just throw Ms. Quinn's points out there too? Um, so fourth of July, um, somebody that's on the board told me that, um, texted me and said that the board had voted not to have the concession stand open. Um, the.
For this year?
Even if the board votes to not have the concession stand open on the fourth of July, it, the board doesn't have to work it because they don't work for the city, but the city says that the concession stand will be open on the fourth of July. So I'm, I'm speaking for them, but I'm just going by Ms., I'm repeating, I'm giving what Ms. Quinn wanted to make sure everybody knew. That the concession stand would be open on the fourth of July.
And also.
So if, if the board can't work it, you would need volunteers that could.
That's new to me, like, I have.
Well, that's what I was told by the person that texted that's on the board. Um, also, there's already three food trucks that have signed up, and so I'll have that information for you. You can get that from me. That same person that also asked for finances, this was last week. I've not had any requests for finances since I've been here seven months. But last week they asked for finances. Unfortunately, all I can give is a total of what's in the account because right now we're changing from one program to the other. I just finished rec last week. But I also don't know what's out that Tim has bought, purchased. Um, that might be outstanding. So what's in the account may not be what's going to be in the account soon, because I don't know what's outstanding.
Thank you.
Um, let's see, what else she?
I never saw anything come across here either for uniforms, whether y'all did or not.
Okay, so.
Man, I know uniforms.
Inventory is also something else.
I was told by.
Go ahead.
Um, Joey wants, y'all want to leave to go to a meeting, so I ain't even going to say the amount.
Okay, that's fine.
But used to, used to, the director would go to businesses and get sponsorships for each team or whatever. So I'm told that there's a very, very large bill that's going to come to the city soon, that's already been done. And I'm told it's a huge knockdown fallout with your mouth open kind of deal. And, um.
Big bill. Well, I was told, and I'm a council member, so I was told I was going to let y'all know when we got through. Uh, y'all will see the amount, but the city has paid for every uniform that's been bought and they bought teams out there.
And I think there's thirteen teams or something like that.
Team, so the city bought all the uniforms.
And it, it, generally, the coaches are the rec director gets sponsors to pay for the uniforms every year. That's not something that the city's been doing.
The city's never bought a uniform. Now, with that said.
I'm sorry, this is not part of your interview.
This is all new to me. But you need to kind of know that you can't go order a multiple, multiple thousand dollars worth of stuff.
Yeah.
And just, because they're going to get you.
Repercussion, as a council member, I don't know, because the thing is, he, after denying he'd be our former rec director, the bill has not been paid. Our president or vice president has not signed that check, but you know, it's up to the, I've never been in a situation, I've been here fifteen years, we've never, and Trey's been up here, we've never bought, uh, ready to let the city buy no set of uniforms for their teams. Well, I.
We always go get sponsors.
We bought All-Star uniforms.
I mean, Trey sponsored certain teams and you can get sponsors. You know, uh, I don't know why he'd do that. Uh, he's done a lot of stuff here lately. For the city, just like the three thousand something dollar purchase he made was, you know, it was uncalled for. Even already down the sea, but the, that's what Candace just, uh, told y'all. You have to watch your board, because it's your board after the night. And, you know, they do text, you know, certain board members is texting, telling, you know? So that's what you run into when you start telling on people. But the bottom line, when the day's said and done, it just, it's finished, you're in charge. You turn to that person, male or female, and just say, listen, you know, it's going to be like this. If you don't like it, you know, you can, you can go down the road, simple as that, you know? Because you're in charge and, uh, I think, you know, uh, like you said, it's going to take you a little bit, uh, to, to learn. You know, if you do keep the board or keep certain ones as volunteers, uh, who you can trust and who you can't trust, you know?
I, I have one thing to add before I ask you if you still want us to vote on you, looking to pull your applications. Me personally, as a council member, I have a real problem with the treasury, having a treasury person. I understand if you've got two moms out there running concession for you, it's really easy to have one running it. And if one serving, one person running the registry, you understand, say, when they swap, you pull the reel. You count it, witness it, you hold on to it till you turn it in. But to actually have somebody on your board handling that, you don't know if it's getting where it's supposed to go or not. And at the end of the day, everything falls on the rec director. Everything.
Right.
So, and it's just a suggestion. But if, if I were the rec director, it would not be going on like that because it's, it's, it's too dangerous. That's just my, my opinion. Now, with that being said, and with as much as we probably scared you just about to death, um, are you still willing
Yes.
to take the job? May I have a motion?
I'm making a motion with her. Uh, Nikki Gauthier as a rec director.
Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
With that, let me get this out before I forget it. Inventory. We've got all Easter stuff. Candace, you already know about that. I guess you let him know.
Haven't heard anything.
Okay. There needs to be, his last day is the third?
That's thirty days. Thirty days from when he turns in.
Well, we, we've hired somebody else. Now, there needs to be a get together, a keys.
Yeah.
There needs to be an inventory. They should have been in inventory for the last two years and has been, so. Um.
Then she's not going to be able to inventory because the coaches already had the equipment.
No, when they get them back, she'll be able to.
That's, yeah, she won't be able to do it till it comes back, really.
Yeah, what's there? When you get there and you get the keys, I would take pictures at least until you can itemize everything and, and do an inventory. And then as everything starts coming back in, do an inventory then. Um.
We do need to give her a copy of what he purchased, the three thousand something dollars. She can at least, at least have a copy of that to get that back.
The gloves and all that stuff, there was.
Yes, the city just spent three thousand something dollars.
On some stuff that we don't own.
Out there.
Catcher's mitts.
Shoes.
Shoes.
Yeah.
Um, it was over three thousand dollars worth of bottoms that was purchased. And there's, your spending limit a lot is a thousand. That you, you can do that without asking. That you you can do that without asking committee counsel about it. That's all all departments, I'm correct on that, right? It's a thousand, not fifteen hundred? Okay, so, just wanna let you know about that. And I guess the rest will play by ear.
And you're supposed to be at the workshop and the meeting that's twice a month, on the first and third Monday at, um, five-thirty, unless there's a holiday or something.
Yeah, to get an update report. Also, you you know, we've got the Fourth of July stuff that's coming up, which is on the third, am I correct on that?
It might be the first, it it's the Saturday before Fourth of July, whatever that day is.
Yeah, I know, it's not on the fourth, but that event, so, and she can get you all the information on that too, so.
We've already booked the same, you know, the talent for it, the Fourth of, the, uh, firecrackers are already fireworks are are done.
That part.
Yes.
That's done.
That's, we always get fireworks and book the that, you're you'll be handling like the food truck vendors, and some of them are gonna come into city hall too, but.
Yeah, I've already got three done, I've already sent out emails to people, letters, uh, but you would wanna reach out to, like, Mr. Paul right here, to get that publicized, so that he can start now to get people to come for the Fourth of July, you know, for the event. And then, um, other vendors that might wanna come and set up a booth and sell something, and, um, your concession stand workers. And, um, bounce houses, inflatables, all all that stuff that I mean, that's just all the little parts of it.
And that's that's been done, so now it's basically taking in the rest of the vendors and and the vendor space is forty?
Think y'all decided forty and a hundred fifty on food truck.
On the food truck, and churches and, um.
Schools.
Nonprofits. Fundraisers are free, they get a free slot.
Is there like a clause between like what, a concession can like sell versus what, the food trucks? Like, do we have to?
Generally, what they've done in the past with the food trucks.
A non-compete clause.
Ma'am?
A non-compete clause, like?
Yeah, well, generally, it's been like, we had an issue with barbecue, two barbecue trucks.
Yeah, we've we've already got one that's turned in that sells barbecue, funnel cakes, um, all kinds of stuff.
Try not to sell the same stuff, but now, like, I do know that there's one, um, that's gonna try to do, and it's a nonprofit middle school too, I I know about that, because my daughter told me that they were gonna try to do it, like baked goods, you know, homemade baked goods. But generally, for the food trucks, I think it's if somebody, the first one that signs up for barbecue is the one we do it, and then the other ones have to sell something else. Is that the way we've been doing it?
I don't know.
Because, well, I don't know how he, I know there was an issue with it last time, the rec, the rec director wasn't letting it go on that way, and somebody got it set. But they ended up being two, and it worked out. Everybody, there was enough, there's enough people that come out there, in my opinion, two or three people could sell the same thing, and they're gonna, everybody's gonna get business, so.
I think it'll be fine.
Uh, I don't have a problem.
Fill the space up and then.
So like, the concession stand could sell like hamburgers and hot dogs and stuff like that, even if the food truck?
Yes, because it's, yeah, and that's the main thing is I'm gonna tell you this, and then I'm I'm trying to say anything else. Um, Fourth of July is the largest event for rec. For making money, for to be able to spend on the kids in the community. And last year, four hundred dollars was turned in for the whole event. That's unacceptable. There was more money made in one basketball concession right over here one night. So, we want concession open. Um, always, as I mean, you know, as much as you can, just, I mean, if you're having, you know, a practice and you've got twenty people out there and there's no sense in cooking, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Use your own judgment on that, if you're gonna have, if you wanna have it open and you have the volunteers for a practice, sell them some water or chips or something, you ain't gotta cook, you know, but on on events and games and stuff, yes, concessions should be open, because that's that's the money maker. So. Does anybody else have anything on that? So I guess you, Candace, you'll coordinate getting the keys and all to her and.
I'll do my best, just.
And all that, so you can just get Candace on that, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Good luck. Call us if you need us.
Okay.
I think the biggest thing that I we all want is communication, and for things to be set in order, we like, we don't want three thousand dollar checks coming in front of us and and told, and now this, I'm gonna go ahead and let y'all know, since you brought it up, this team uniform thing. This big check is coming in, I may or may not sign it. I'm just telling y'all, so we may have to do it with that, because I that's not the way.
I haven't seen it yet, I just heard about it.
I agree.
So hopefully, there's a lot of fundraising going on.
I I hope so. That's unacceptable. We're fast in a hurry, because you have a thousand dollar spending limit and well, and we we brought that up, the last time we saw him the night that he resigned, um, that wasn't mentioned then either. And we were upset over the three thousand dollar one, and and I know what. I I got a ballpark idea of what the cost is for that many uniforms and I.
I feel like it's, uh, you say a hundred and seventy kids were signed up?
For the bill.
Do you know how many kids are signed up? I I'd have to, I could go in there and look on my spreadsheet, but it's a lot of kids.
For the last thirty years that I know of, the coaches always got sponsors for their kids' uniforms. That was just part of it, and and the rec director got sponsors and letters went out and donations were taken. So, okay, we've got, we can't be here all night.
Joey gotta go to, they gotta go to a ball game.
So, if nobody has anything else, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting and move to the workshop?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
So.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Adjourn, and I'm opening up the workshop, which number one, we've been given a copy of the ways of management renewal, which I think needs to be sent to the attorney.
He's coming tomorrow at ten o'clock to talk, I think, details about that. Um, but I had to put it on here so we could discuss if if we're gonna tell them we're.
Well, he hasn't given us.
If we're gonna go for bid, if y'all decided y'all wanted to go for bids, or, you know, because he's gonna ask me tomorrow something.
I think that's gonna depend on what their price is.
And it's gonna be, wouldn't I say ten or thirteen percent?
I think you said thirteen percent.
Yeah, something like that.
Any increase? I put it out for bid. At least, at least see what you. See what's out there.
Telling that we're gonna put it out for bid and they can put in a bid. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that's what the attorney suggested us last time we talked about. So, nobody has anything else on that? Number two, the Florida power lot update.
Oh, Tracy came by last week, um, that's the, with Florida power lots in Chipley, uh, Mayor of Chipley, Tracy. And, um, they found that the school board, who's tax exempt, has been paying utility taxes on their, um, power bills for apparently ever, I don't know how long. It's not, we didn't do that, that's nothing to do with us, they did it, they did it wrong, but now they have to reimburse them. So, basically, they want it back from the city, they can only go back three years. It's, um, nineteen thousand dollars. Nineteen thousand six hundred eighty dollars and eighty-six cents, um, that they're going to not give the city, or it'll take about three months to compensate that back from what they normally deposit in utility tax sales. So that's nineteen thousand whatever out of our budget for the year that we're, that just tanked. Um, so, because we count our utility ta, you know, a projected amount in the budget. Um, so I'm letting y'all know that, we'll have to find that somewhere else. And, um, of course, it's nothing that the city did, that was their mistake, I don't see how their mistake.
Have you talked to the?
Should have to come from up, but we should have to correct it, but they did give us money that they weren't supposed to have taxed the people on to start with, so. And that could be a, I was gonna ask Michelle, but she had an event tonight?
I would ask her about it, just see, kind of what the.
That's what Brittany.
Because I mean, just say if it could be over three months, I mean, could it actually be drew out over, say, twelve months?
They'll, as far as they'll draw it out is, uh,
Nine to ten.
Six months, but it's all gonna come out in the same fiscal budget year, so it wouldn't really affect. I mean, it's still the same.
They're gonna get it anyway.
Uh, yeah, so I'll ask Michelle about that.
All right, and number three, the finance updates.
And I just put that in there for y'all to see, basically, where we're at right now, I just try to try to do that once a month, so y'all get an idea.
I have one question on that real quick. The city hall fund. Is that the community center, or is that the grant part that we got?
It's not a grant, that's just what's in that account, and that comes from city hall rent, any revenue that goes to that.
To the community and all that, okay. Okay, that's all I have on that. Number four, unless anybody else has anything. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to be rude, I'm trying to move along, so y'all can do what you have to do.
Is there something that shows what comes out of these accounts?
I.
Anyway. And what what the money's useful for?
Yeah, I mean, we can do, if if you want a detail, we can do that.
Just to see, I mean, because some of them name certain things, it's just kinda hard to tell exactly what they're actually using.
Yeah, any of them, just come in, we can go through it, it's not, well, it's kinda halfway in, but we can go between the two, the two programs, and I could show you. Oh, I did talk to the accountant, that was another part of the finance update. I asked them, because y'all had said you thought that they were gonna transfer things from Banyan to QuickBooks, but they said they were just setting up QuickBooks. And, um, he said that they could take it and do it all, um, but it'll be eighty dollars an hour to do it, to get it to where it's supposed to be.
But didn't, when he came and discussed that, didn't he tell us that he would be willing to help set that up? I mean, help set that up with?
Their setup meant set it up as a program and set the accounts up from what, in other words, forty-three one hundred would be reg, and put the numbers in as far as that goes, and then that was what they meant.
Okay, so my next question is gonna be, is, does he even have time to do that, because I know that you have.
He said he would he would give it to one of his employees to do, um, because his rate's a hundred fifty, so he would, they could do it for eighty if.
Is that something you need him to do?
I can do it, but I'm gonna be doing it for the next six months, because I get fifteen minutes at the time to to work on it, is the problem.
How quick can they do it?
That, so I, my thought is, y'all probably gonna be paying me more than you'll pay them in the long run. Um, I, he didn't give a timeline, but I don't think he grasped what he's the Banyan program talked to each other, so the utility billing transferred the information if a water sewer garbage payment was made, and it broke it down. This much went to garbage, this much went sewer, this much went water. Now, under QuickBooks, I need to categorize that for the last year and a half. And it needs to match up with the deposits. Well, the deposits are done, but say PSN does their deposit, well, that might go in there, but they do it in three days, over, it it's broken down, it doesn't all go in at one time. So, I don't think he's, because he hasn't looked at it and seen it, I don't know that he's understanding that. But if I made a sixteen hundred dollar deposit today in cash, we could break that down. But for me to try to break that down over the last year and a half of daily deposits, if that's how we, it's got to be done for audit, is going to, that would be all I did, honestly, and I couldn't do anything else.
So, we can't vote on it, because this is a workshop, but can you find out from him, can you explain that situation to him?
I mean, I tried to, I well, I talked, I talked to Garrett about it, but see, Garrett's not sitting there looking at it to to really understand what I'm, this program talked to this program, nobody ever had to do it, it did it itself.
It did itself. So what I'm saying is that can you explain that, Lee, or get Lee down here?
Yeah.
And then ask him, how long does he think it it'll take, so we'll have a better understanding of what kind of money we're gonna be spending?
Yeah.
And, I mean, we certainly can't put all that on you.
Well, and I've been doing the other accounts, like, you know, I've been doing the accounts that you don't have to do that, but it, honest to goodness, took me three weeks just to get the rec account done, because I had to go to everything, trying to figure out, well, what was that hundred and fifty dollar deposit for, you know, so.
So we're gonna need the help, we just need to know, can he get this done in a timely manner, or is this gonna stretch out a year and a half?
Because water and sewer's probably got two thousand transactions that are regular bank transactions that aren't those transactions for daily for the past year and a half.
I I guess my my only concern is him giving us an hourly rate, and us not having.
Well, and that's what he said, he didn't know how long it was gonna take, so he couldn't tell you a a flat fee.
Well, if you can reach back out to him and see if he can narrow it down a little bit.
Okay.
It could get really expensive.
Yeah, because I mean, i- if he's talking.
And he did, he did say that y'all might cap and say not past this amount, but, I mean.
But, well, that still doesn't guarantee us, he, you know, he might drag it out and we need him to narrow it down.
Okay, I got you. And that's, that's it on the financial.
I don't want to put all that on you, I just don't want to.
I just don't want us to get behind on our audit, I can sit there and do it, but it's going to take me so long because of the regular job I need to be doing.
Yeah, but if, what I'm saying is, if if it's gonna take his employee the same amount of time it is you, then we'll have to look at the numbers.
Yeah. So, okay.
Okay. Last thing, Candace, um, has a request about changing what, Candace, you show them.
It, y'all don't have to, I won't be mad, it's okay, but, um, I wanted to either be off a half a day on Friday, or sometimes all day on Friday, because I get my forty hours in anyway. And that's just so I get me sleep a little bit on Friday and Saturday night, but if I can't, that's okay. I work from my phone a lot anyway, because if I go to lunch, I'm still checking my emails and doing that. I don't have a problem if y'all don't want me to. A man that can be there that day, I never have grant meetings or any of that on Fridays, we don't do them on Fridays. Um, and like I said, I don't have to, and also, do y'all want her to work five or six hours a day, do you want her to work three days a week?
What do you need her for?
I want her to get her, you know, you know, her hours, so.
Well, with that said, you asking for time out. It's up to you, I know she's part-time from three to six or whatever, but she's in the learning stage. I'd see, you know, right now, before we get closer to the audit and all, and put you, you know, vacation time, whatever, like I told you before. I'd like to see her work, you know, all she can work to learn.
I'm trying to give her the thirty-two hours every week, you know, because that's part-time, I'm trying to give her to that.
I say, you set it up however you need it, she's your assistant, and I don't have a problem with you taking Friday off.
I don't either.
At all.
Well, and I'm.
You working up, and I know you're here after hours. You know, I've seen you, and here after hours having to work, I don't have a problem with you switching her out when you need her, giving her part-time hours, and set it up where you can have Fridays off.
Well, it's hard for me, training her right now is to keep her in the hours, she can't, she either can't open or she can't close to to learn it, so I didn't know if it made it to just be better to work all day and then and be off a a day. That way, though, at least she could, she could do that from the beginning to the end, because she can't get that whole, you know, not doing the whole day. She never opens, or she never closes, and it's hard to learn, you gotta do it several times, and I under I overestimate, I don't mean to, I overestimate what she's very intelligent, so it's not that at all, but I overestimate how long it takes people to learn something. So, you know, and I don't wanna put pressure on her, I don't want her to get stressed and quit or whatever, but, so I'm trying to to not put, we're trying to learn one thing at a time, and then when we get good at that, then we'll learn the next thing.
Like you're saying, with her working half-days, like, either mornings or afternoons.
She don't get the whole concept of it.
She's not, it's gonna take her longer to get to home, so I would set it by the days.
Okay.
And give yourself Friday off at the basketball.
So if we, well, my concern was, though, if there's two days a week or a day a week she doesn't work, do y'all want me to still close at noon? I don't wanna screw the public up with when they're coming in and us be.
Close on, on the door saying we're closed from this time to this time.
Okay, I just don't wanna.
It's up to you.
So, okay.
That's fine. Most places close
Okay.
At lunchtime.
Can I just say that our public works director has a new tractor and trailer? Can I just say that our public works director has a new tractor and trailer and side-by-side, and I got it tagged today, so I went to Chipley and got that done.
I went through the tornado to get that thing.
He did. He was driving home when the tornado came through, and the hail that was that big.
I saw the side-by-side. It's nice.
We do have um dump trucks on, Jason sent a video, dump trucks on Palmby today. Like.
New York or New York?
No, I heck, I don't know.
I think they uh
Who are they?
I've seen them.
G three.
Oh, really? I've seen them.
Is that G?
That's G three. G three's, oh, they're a contractor for C W offers.
Yeah, that's him.
Yeah.
They was on it uh
Are they loaded or unloaded?
Uh, I don't know.
They should be coming, they're, they're, they should be unloaded. They they know better come in than sure it's loaded. They coming out from are they paving?
Yeah.
Uh, new Jerusalem right now?
Yeah.
Okay, they got to come out. They 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 got to come out that way. They can't run back over there hot.
They, they, one come, when I come, I was down there, well, looking at everything, one come down Church Street the right way, and then
Oh, so which road y'all want to come down?
I'd really come down Church Street.
Okay, that's simple, that's simple. Me telling that, I'll make, I'll take, get Parker now.
Just send them down.
Mr. Pippin did already call today.
Who?
Mr. Pippin, and I sent a work order for them to go ahead and pack some holes so they didn't get too bad.
If they, I'll have, whenever they through Pippin that road, I'll have them come to the county, come back with a patch truck and touch everything out on Church Street.
Thank you.
That's not, I didn't uh, I I didn't know they were, I thought they were, oh, they're doing that last stretch. They're actually doing the city street.
Well, that's what I was thinking. It must be.
They're doing, they're doing.
Yeah, they do one from uh
The curve, the curve, yeah.
Back to Indian Palmby.
That's actually City Street that far? Free off City Limits, yeah. I have no clue.
It's, it's um
I can't believe this way.
It's lowest rock valley or something.
Rather that curve from there on, 'cause that's why they get picked up on up on FEMA. We have to pay for that out of our pocket, you know, the county government. But from that curve all the way back, that's, that's actually uh Church Street to that curve.
I didn't realize it.
I didn't, I have no clue either. I can tell you it is, but I found out, I found out toughly, a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
And I'm glad it's done. I wouldn't bally that stretch of dirt there.
Does anybody else have anything?
I just want to ask one question.
I'm seeing the doctor.
I, what, what color do y'all want? Y'all got preferences? Uh, I know we spoke about it a while back about Shady Grove, getting rid of the green and a gray would be fine with y'all, and maybe a burning paint on it, blue or something?
Maybe a, a
If y'all wanna pick the color out, that's fine. Just, I I just, I'm gonna get rid of that green.
I don't mind gray.
Just, just something, get, get a burner to it, though.
Yeah, burner, a gray, a gray.
Or an orange V or?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna go with gray uniforms this year, uh with the burner, the butt up with the burner across them, so we'll probably do something matching uniforms. Y'all good with that? I hate that green, though. It's got, we've put so much money and time in that field, and you look at that green, it just makes you wonder. Man, it gets on my nerves.
It's as bad as the, remember when the sportsplex was
And west?
Well, it was a green color. A lot, light green color.
It's still a light green color. Or no, no, that, that same paint's there at Shady Grove, so if you like that so much, you go to Shady Grove and hook that.
That's what you're saying, Don. But it stood out so much more at the sportsplex because it was such a bigger area and it's so open out there and it.
But uh, we're uh, we don't get the, the uh glass fixed and the session, so you'll probably see the plow it off that in a couple of days. Uh, we start holding games, we start playing games, I think, next Thursday night.
So he's got a little
See what's going on. We kill all the weeds finally, uh got grass planted. I don't know if when it's gonna come up, but we finally got the weeds.
It's always a nice field to play on, though.
Yeah, if we never figure, get the dang thing back, work with that.
Yeah, it went down.
I killed, I killed the weeds. I thought I killed everything, 'cause there wasn't no grass left. There wasn't, there wasn't, all there was is weeds, and uh, so now we're trying to get it comeback.
Oh, let me say this to Nikki, the Shady Grove was part of the rec directors up in
I don't know.
And Trey came in and
I'll take care of that.
Yes, he's come in and and got it
I've heard like
looking at the mayors who Shady Grove is up there about.
And this, and now you're, this ball go back here by the track? That's the only rec director team. But the mowing and weed eating
Jason.
The city workers do.
But line in the fields and all that is rec director.
Maybe just use that in the practice.
Yeah, yeah, you wanna.
I'm gonna have to learn.
Yeah.
And I told Timmy, you know, I didn't know, I didn't know all things, I told him to put a sign up on the fields. I'd come in and spray the fields for him. Uh, and kill that grass off of it, but he never got the signs made. I just wanted a kid on every weekend, you know, to spray it for twenty-four, forty-eight hours.
So you win?
I hate Trey.
No, no, we're
Me and Trey go with that.
I got stuff that kill outfield weeds. And it won't kill the grass, but it's gonna look rough. I went down to the base and I was like, oh, boy. Like a desert out there.
That grass grows like that.
Yeah, I, I received it. I, I come back, I have a seat or
Do you have anything else, Mr. Trey? Thank you for everything, too. I know, that's what I'm saying.
We're on a bad note. Twelve thirty. We don't, we don't know yet. It got hit by lightning over the weekend, but we're having to run it manually. So it's just like we wanted to, right now, no communication to the ward tower, so we're having to go out there, turn it on, fill it up, turn it off. We gotta, Jibby's gotta got a guy coming to look at it, and we try to get everybody to look at it. Right now, city war is being done by us. Yep, my work, I tried everything Saturday to get it, change the fuses, relay it, we, we have none.
When is somebody coming to look at it?
I didn't get a phone call today, but I would hope to be next couple of days. I called this afternoon.
They didn't have time. That's where we're going, is we're filling it all the way up, and then it'll li, it'll last for a good while. I mean, like, it's like every hour on the hour, but it's I mean, that's what we're gonna have to do.
If he gets blow after tank, though, you're gonna probably have some nasty water to pour.
So we're having to watch it. So we think either, it either happened Friday when the bad storm hit, or either Saturday when that other one stormed. It's all we can tell. It's hard to tell when it, it keeps on auto, so it has to get it's over, but we're doing the order right now.
Okay, so he's called somebody, gets somebody's cover, but we don't know when.
We don't know exactly when, yeah.
So y'all hear so far? We haven't called back?
Until now, it's gonna be twenty-four hours today, and we just gotta monitor it. If I can fill it up before nine o'clock at night or next morning, it's still, it's okay, but it's, I mean, this is what we got to do. I mean, that, I mean, we've done everything we can do.
And y'all know it's obsolete from the same system that's one and at one and two that we haven't never get repaired. I'm just, I'm not saying we can't repair it, and the friend is the same system that we have nominated and get picked in the last four or five years.
The resilient money comes out in July. That, you need, give Fred Fox or whoever your grant writer is, the resilient part of money, and that's a perfect that's perfect time to get up, prepare.
On three, 'cause we have a grant for one and two.
Looking at about twenty-five thousand, just ballpark to do all three of them, to get you away from telephone wires. I know nobody that uses telephone wire. And the first thing you need to do is call AT&T in the morning, check my
Yeah. We had a, we had a tree get hit right about a plant, but it was away from, I mean, it could have been that, it could have been, we don't know right now.
Okay, so we got a grant for one and two, but contact?
I'll talk to Fred tomorrow.
And Mr. Jimmy, if you don't hear from him tomorrow, you call them back and see, how soon you can get somebody there?
But you do need to call AT&T because if I send them up there, it's twelve hundred dollars, and you hadn't called AT&T. Uh, and it isn't live, you still got to pay it. I, I hadn't thought about that yet, but.
What do you got to hold down then? It's right now, we're we're dead.
The next time we're at a meeting and you have news like that? That is, yeah, ask to be first. Appreciate it.
Well, I didn't want y'all taking it out on her, so.
Does anybody else have anything? I'm sorry, you asked me what? Yeah, Candace is going to handle that. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Second. This discussion, all in favor? Meeting adjourned.